You don't know which camera is mine.
I know, that's the thing, yeah.
Well, I'd like to welcome all of you to Selectmen's Meeting Halifax, February 28th, 2017. And the first thing on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'll join me. And we've been telecast or televised by Area 58 Studios.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have we all said anything to be added to the agenda? You guys all set? Where? Okay, it's in your...
Okey dokey.
Does it roll out?
So, everybody had an opportunity to review the executive session for November 22nd, January 10th, January 24th, and February 14th.
Yes.
I will move those.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 74 for $348,283.2. Vendor warrant number 75 for $171,847.78. Ambulance commitment number 2B for $50,407.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. I move to approve the following warrants and commitments. Withholding warrant number 76 for $127,052.5. Vendor warrant number 77 for $290,781.87. Ambulance commitment number 2C for $60.
Second. No further discussion? Everything? All in favor?
I move to approve the following Selectmen's Bill dated February 28th, 2017. The Varix Company for Professional Services for $600. Looks like it's for the Halifax Elementary School. Habib and Associates Architects for $46,950. I would choke on that, too. That is for our piece of the living study for the roof project. Lynch Malloy Marini, which is $5,000 for audit. Express Newspapers for ads for surplus vehicles for $21.50. The County of Plymouth for contribution for the extension services. This is the $150 that we vote every year at town meeting. National Grid for the monthly electricity bill for $1,623.57. Am I wrong?
No, 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 I was just spreading out. I'm sorry.
Harry B. Harding and Sons for $148.60. And the MMA for the monthly meeting for $40. And National Grid for the concession stand for $31.80.
Hey, second.
Back to my point.
All in favor?
Aye. And I acknowledge one turnover, which is turnover number 2017-29 for $5. And I'm done.
Okay. Charlie?
We do have a few minutes before 7:45. The first I am ahead of my notes was, in fact, the pilot agreement. We'll get to that at 7:45. Water Department and Wage and Personnel. One of the matters before wage and personnel for possible recommendation to town meeting is a on-call proposal from the Water Department for a stipend for, on a rotating basis, they would have their employees be paid, I believe, $150 stipend each week for being available to respond to calls within a certain amount of time. Labor Council's reviewed the proposal. There's no legal problems with it. Obviously, I have some concerns that if this is approved or recommended by wage and personnel and approved by town meeting, they will have one or more other departments looking for the same thing.
We went through, when I first came over, we went through this with the Fire Department. I was trying to be on-call and get paid while they were on-call, waiting to come in. Not even if they came in at all. That's the only thing I'm concerned about is that it's not going to be a stipend then, no matter whether they come in or not, they get paid.
They would get $150, no matter whether they came in or not. It would not be on an hourly basis. It would be a stipend, basically, just a simple, here's money, thank you very much, not based on the number of hours. Obviously, they would earn additional money if they actually came in on a call.
Let me have a problem with it, but we'll see.
Well, I wanted the board to...
I'm not a super fan.
I wanted the board to realize that that was going on, that you're for wage and personnel, and that council would refute it. Silver Lake with the possible land sale to the town of Kingston for the police station. They'll have their public hearing on Thursday, March 9th, at 7:00 PM at Silver Lake Regional High School in the large roof room. Town's appraisers should have a report by Monday, March 6th, next Monday, which I'll distribute once I receive it. Town Plintons indicated it will contribute to the cost of the appraisal. So, this would be lining up. So, I'm hoping by Monday, we'll have a copy of the appraisal. We have the non-binding article on the warrant on March 7th for the town meeting. And then on March 9th will be the public hearing at Silver Lake. Alcohol licensing procedures. I probably gave you too many copies from too many towns, but I wanted to show you some examples. What came up is that there was a South Shore community several weeks ago that had a decision by its licensing board overturned by the ABCC because the, one of the reasons given was the ABCC thought that the rules for, especially on disciplinary procedures for license violations, were not written down. They were too informal and such. So, I had contacted the ABCC and they said, well, we don't have any sort of model or best practices to follow. So, then I contacted my colleagues out here on the South Shore. I've got a few examples of that. I've sent them over to the police chief also, and I'm going to try and bring a draft in for Halifax. That would cover more than just the disciplinary procedures, since many of them cover other matters regarding the alcohol licenses. Luckily, we've not had a frequent need to go to disciplinary procedures, but it'd be nice to have this set off in case we did, whether it's this board or some future board, to have a set to follow. So, I'll bring that up in a couple of weeks. Not next week, but the meeting, first meeting in March. Outdoor entertainment and the zoning amendment, that's before the special town meeting. The planning board held a public hearing on Thursday, February 23rd, and the proposed change allowed for outdoor and indoor entertainment in the AR District by special permit with the board's selectmen. There were over 30 people in attendance, and there was a spirited discussion. I think the hearing was probably a good hour, Kim.
Yes.
Something on that order.
Yes.
There is some opposition to the measure because whether or not it's only allowed by special permit, butters to some of the potential sites are concerned about how these events might be detrimental to their properties and to their lives. Not in the sense of danger to lives, but just, you know, the ability to live, you know, quality of life. A question did come up as to whether the concerts and such would fit under the outdoor entertainment use in the list of uses in our zoning bylaw, or they fall under one of these others, which would be the retail commercial businesses with operations in terms of open-air operations. Obviously, you could say if you were having a concert, for instance, it's a retail business with an open-air operation. Or open-air businesses and outside sales, whereas we have a definition in the bylaw that says a temporary business conducted in the outdoors, not requiring an enclosed sheltered structure. Again, a concert might fit that definition, especially given its temporary nature. I've contacted Land Use Council for advice in the sense of it, is it a situation that we can clearly point at one of those three and say that's where a concert, for instance, would be, falls under the list of uses? Or is it a situation where the building inspector or zoning enforcement officer would say, well, I know it as I see, I know when I see it, I'm going to pick one of these and say that's where it falls under? So, I'm reviewing that with town council. Now, the planning board's going to meet tomorrow night, Thursday night, and make a recommendation about the article. The hearing is closed, so I can't bring further information to the planning board at that point. I will, my hope is, have further information before town meeting on next Tuesday. It may be a situation that council says, you really have to pick one of these others, not the one I thought assumed it was under, that I would recommend to the board and the planning board and the town meeting to pass over that article at this point. I mean, I think it's a good try to, we're making, and I don't mean the board is, in the sense of the proposal's a good try to get a better handle on the situation, but if it's the wrong thing to mend, there's little point in doing that. And as much as I didn't want to deal with timing issues, waiting until May, I'd rather have it done right in May than done poorly next week.
Okay, so we would, if that's the case, Charlie, we would simply pass over the article?
Well, there'd be a motion to pass over it, but obviously, town meeting still would have a decision, could decide, well, no, we don't want to pass over.
Okay.
But I think if the board moved to pass over it, I think the chances of its passage at town meeting are less likely.
Okay.
I didn't want to tell the board, not that any of you are really new, but there is a new official's finance form in Worcesterup at Holy Cross on May 31st. I think it's pretty much an all-day affair. I did tell the finance department that also. Not that we have a recycling abatement before the board, but we had a resident who had called because he's several years in arrears. He feels, you know, the usual situation that he has, he actually has his own firm, a commercial firm, that he brings his trash and recycling to, and that, at his business operations, they take it away.
Have we dealt with this before?
You've, no, I don't think you've dealt with this person, specific person, before. And the person, and obviously, the board had voted to give a deadline back in January of receiving applications for abatements for fiscal '17 and for previous years. I told the individual that. I said, you can still certainly file for the abatement if you want, but I'll tell you right now that it was the board who came up with the deadline, and I don't know what reception it's going to get. On the police officer contract, patrol officer contract, we're going to be in executive session. I've provided some comments from town council. Police chief will be in a little bit later, and we'll move into executive session.
That one?
Yes, that one. If there are others, then I did invite them, sorry. We're going to executive session, probably fairly soon after we deal, because there's not a lot on the agenda, obviously.
At 7:45, and we've had Ms. Trudeau wait for a while here now.
So, I asked the assessors to come in, or in this case, the principal assessor to come in, to talk a little bit about the pilot. This is a payment in lieu of taxes for the solar field over on the Nazarell property on Summit Street. It's similar to the pilot that we did for the solar field at the Halifax Plinton Line, but I wanted the board to have a chance just to review the important points of it with Karen, because we're bringing this, the intent is to bring this to town meeting next week. There'll be two articles. One that would allow, would authorize the board and through the board of assessors to negotiate the pilot, and then the second article would be to, in fact, approve the pilot. Those would have to be done at town meeting, is not effective without that. If I wanted to go over, Karen wanted to go over the high points with it, what it's about, what's a payment in lieu of taxes? Why are we doing one for a solar field? How much are we getting? How long it is? Surority bonds, things like that.
The property is, you know, 69th Summit, it's the Nazarell property. The solar company is SunConnect, and we've been working to come up with a payment in lieu of tax agreement with them, and we have come up with something. I've worked with the building inspector as far as the permitting fees and the decommissioning fees and having a surety for that. So, if we do have to tear it down, for some reason, they don't, we moved it down. We have a bond in place to cover the costs of that. And with town council, I've worked with him also, coming up with this. The pilot right now, as it sits, hasn't been agreed upon with them yet, so they haven't signed it.
Have they, have you talked to them about the terms?
I have.
Yeah.
It's for $24,699 a year for 20 years. That includes the land and the solar array on the land. So, we have a surety set up. I think we're asking for $30,000?
No, we bumped it up to $70,000.
Oh, that's right, $70,000. I'm sorry, I can't remember that.
That's what the commissioning is.
For the decommissioning, and then the fees for the electrical permitting and the regular building permit, those came from Rob for what, you know, what their charge would be for that.
Right, and we had just recently approved a set of new wiring permit fees for solar panels and such.
Right.
So, that it's based on the number of panels there rather than some other...
Correct, yeah.
Were there any models that you...
We actually, I have actually talked to other towns that have solar arrays and what they have, and we have a site plan that's all approved, and it tells how many panels there's going to be. And it's a 10-acre parcel, they're using half of it, five acres. It's 1.26 kilowatts, so that's what we base...
Probably megawatts.
Megawatts, I'm sorry. Can I say kilowatts?
Yeah.
I do that every time.
So, wouldn't that be in pathfinders in this thing? This has been done before in other towns?
Yes, and we have one here already in town, so...
The Halifax Plinton Line.
Yes, one of them.
Yeah, one on the right-hand side, Tom.
How many panels in that? I had to ask, right?
I know, and I'm not exactly sure how many panels there were exactly.
It's not that, it's five acres. I was just curious what the panel...
Yeah, I'm not sure. I probably have that number somewhere, but off the top of my head, I don't know.
Just bring it to town meeting. Somebody else besides Tom might ask.
Yeah, probably not.
Well, typically, they'd just talk about the megawatts, and they don't really refer to the panels, but...
Do you want me to be the official piano counter?
On the site plan, it does show how many panels...
Yes, I could move that.
I'll be the official piano counter.
So, so this $70,000, is that in flux? I mean, does it change at all during the 20-year...
It will go with the CPI. There's a provision in there that the amount of surority has to increase with the CPI. So, for instance, if there's a 2% increase in the Consumer Price Index from the first year to the second year, it will increase by $1,400.
Right, which I think is what we do that up to. Yeah.
Thank you. Since that was an issue I was dealing with with Rob and town council, that one I knew. I can't tell you how many panels are either, either.
No, no, I know.
I can tell you about the surority.
So, you don't need a motion from us, though?
Well, I think the board should, you're going to be signing off on this. As much as town meeting is going to also approve it, if the board doesn't sign it, I don't mean the board has to sign it tonight. The board will already sign it after town meeting.
Yes.
But I think it's, it's pointless to us to go to town meeting unless the board is in agreement.
Unless there's support.
So, if the board could vote to say, yes, we are intense to sign it, I can...
I'm happy to make a motion that we sign the payment in lieu of taxes with SunConnect MA12 LLC in the town of Halifax. For a large, oh, contingent upon the vote at town meeting.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Karen? Yosef? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Now, I'll have to find that number.
Someone's going to ask.
Well, just drive down there with a flashlight.
Good idea.
And piece it off.
Thank you.
It's on the plan. Don't let me count you.
Good night. You, too.
Take care. Charlie is back in your ballpark. Your belly view.
Alice Autobody, they have a site plan in the folder for a 50-foot by 50-foot storage building for vehicles and parts at their property, 822 Old Plymouth Street. It meets all the zoning requirements. There's no special permits or variances needed, but it does meet site plan review. The board isn't the approving authority in this, but what happens is the planning board does send it out, the site plan, to a number of town departments, boards, and committees, including the board's selectmen, for their review. I did leave a, suggest that we have the question of what the parts are going to be there, since it's going to be for parts of vehicles. If the parts are simply sold out of the shed or the storage facility, it's a different thing than using them for the auto repair. By all means, if he needs the storage facility to store parts for his auto repair business, that's great, but selling the parts would be a different situation in the sense of someone would come in and say, well, I need a bumper, or I need a door, or something like that. That's a different type of operation than what he's licensed for right now. And I want to get that clear as part of the site plan review as to the intent of the use of the storage building. The planning board's welcome comments the 16th, so if the board wants to hold over for a couple of weeks, we could do that. As I mentioned, the plan's here.
Has that question been presented to...
Not yet, because we only received the plan, and I went up to the planning board office to ask, and all they know right now is, in fact, it's listed as for storing of use, storing of vehicles and parts. So, I don't know the intent of what will happen to all these vehicles and parts. Obviously, the vehicles, they'll be repaired. The parts, I'm not sure what the disposition is.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Does the board want to hold this over for a couple of weeks? Does the board want me to know where the...
Well, I'd like to get an answer, so you have an answer to your question before you make a decision, and then...
Well, I think that we probably won't have an answer until he meets with the planning board.
Yes.
I think I just want to get that question to, up there, that, so it will be answered by the planning board as part of their process.
Yep, that's one.
Okay. Road, Rick Springer's requested acceptance on Heron Road. The board would have to waive submission dates, et cetera, because normally, we, the acceptance articles have to be in by November 1st.
Oh.
Yeah. So, if we're going to set this up, I need to set up two hearings, probably one not for the meeting on the 14th, but probably the meeting on the 28th.
Do you know if the planning board's had any...
I don't know anything.
The review?
We just got this in the last 24 hours.
Yes, I was in the building inspector's office when we...
Right, but I don't know if the board wants to proceed.
Have we done that before? Have we waived?
There are years you've waived, yeah.
Some days, we have.
We've waived it in the past, but...
Okay.
I think Tom's point is that everything else checked off, with little point for the board to...
Yeah, I don't have a problem with way more filing date, had they checked with all the other boards.
I don't know yet.
As long as they're in compliance with their...
And I assume he's gone to the planning board to get their check off already, but I don't know that.
We don't, we don't have anything from any of the boards that they've...
Well, yes, because again, we've only gotten this last week.
Right.
And I can start the process by, in essence, getting a note out to everybody and saying, we've received this. Have you all done your due diligence? Highway Department gone out there and said, no, there are no deficiencies, et cetera? I'd like to informally set up the hearing, the informal hearing for March 28th, simply to get the gears rolling.
I can't come in on that day.
Okay. It's your anniversary.
That's my birthday.
It's your birthday, okay. Is the board moving the meeting?
No, I'm only joking. I'll be here.
Well...
I was going to just sing "Happy Birthday" in acapella.
Which, do you play it, is true? The Glockenspiel?
I did play the viola, but my dad asked me to stop because I can't...
I'm looking for a portrait, actually, that you can do from...
Oh, okay, I'm going to do it as a portrait.
Well, that's, Shirley does still lives. Well, that's all we are, still life.
I can be very still.
Okay, well, I'll start moving some gears on this.
Okay.
Pouring license, early Sunday opening. We have a petition article to accept the necessary state statute.
Pouring license?
Yeah, pouring license, on premises.
Should they want to search their...
Basically, drink earlier. Drink earlier, yes.
Bring a straw.
You want your mimosa at 10:00 AM on Sunday. I mean, you could have it at 10:00 AM on Saturday, but you want one on Sunday at 10:00 AM, you have to get this accepted. So, we have a petition article. There's no action needed by the board, but I did want to tell the board that it's going to be on the law.
I still undermine, and I have to say it, that you got six days in the week to get your alcohol and drink. Why do we have to do it all sudden?
For some people, they...
Community.
Some people...
I understand.
Some people treat Sunday differently than you do.
You just got to communicate.
You do that Saturday night.
No, commuting is on Sunday morning.
You can do commute on Saturday night.
But if you want a drink on a Sunday...
And how would I know that?
How would you?
Been there, done that. South Coast Legal Services, we got a petition article for, annual article that we normally get, for $300, $500 for them. Let's see. I had, regarding pilots, everything, don't worry about it. I thought about, when I, before really talking this through with town council, I had some concerns about what happens to surority, this disappears or anything, but he said we're in good shape, so we'll skip that. Just official notification from the MSBA that our project was approved, so our next step is to town meeting for the school repair project. That'll be next, Tuesday on March 7th. The election also on Saturday, March 11th. Audit engagement letter, this is the audit that's being done for fiscal '16. We should be getting that done, finished, actually, in the next couple of weeks.
I'll make a motion that we, the chair, to sign the audit engagement letter.
I'll second that.
But let him already merit.
Mm-hmm.
Is that it?
Yes, where the yellow circle is. Is there a motion?
I did.
Yes.
Second?
Yes, it was.
All in favor?
Yes. Kim didn't say yes. I don't hear a word.
Oh, yes.
She means it.
Yes.
Okay, surplus vehicles.
That's what I got distracted.
Yes. We had our big sale, and our deadlines were back on Friday, and these were the results. I don't see need to go through every single one of them. We'll have it up on the website at some point as to which vehicles went to which people, but if the board would approve awarding the, I think it's 11, is it 11, 12? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 cars, vehicles, trucks and such, to the high bidders in each case.
So, move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I did want to note that I really, as much as I procrastinated a heck of a lot and was doing other things, this turned out, I think, to be a great thing for the town. I think we got a lot more activity in terms of bidding, because I was keeping track every once in a while of what the numbers were like, and there was a significant number of bids the last couple of days before the deadline. So, I think the town made out very nicely.
One of these is from Jamaica, New York.
Well, one's from Rensselaer, New York.
From Hamburg, New York, and we got resident, resident, was it?
Just adding up.
So, if, you know, next time we have vehicles, which are assumed, maybe probably sometime this summer when we do another trade-in or something like that, I think I'll be going down this route.
I guess I, I'm looking at this, and we've awarded it, but we've got a 2003 Dodge Ram for $450, and we've got a 1978 Chevy C3 for $1,700.
People want what they want.
Yeah.
They think they can do something more with a vehicle. Maybe, you know, the 2003 wasn't in poor enough shape that it was just basically parts-only.
Or sentimental value.
Who knows what the New Yorker's going to do?
Just on the Burge Pond Elm Street access, Chris Cosmarty Butter contacted Jason Zimmer from British Wildlife, requested the large folder in the wall to be replaced, and that the, and also the one, I guess, at the ends of his fence to keep track of the Galvez property.
Should we send a follow-up letter, ask him if, in fact, it's appropriate that he does that?
No, this is correspondence...
Between the states.
Yeah, I just wanted the board to be aware of it.
But it looks like, like I haven't been there, but when I drive by while paying attention to the road, I check it out, and it looks like a car could get down there.
Yeah, they, yeah.
Yeah, a car could easily get down it.
Yeah.
I know, I know, because I did it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I drove in, just to see if it could get by. Yeah, I drove in, just to see if it could get by. I was scared, I was just stuck.
But your car fits through it? Without four-wheel drive?
We had a dog bite incident at Terrorwood Kennels on February 19th, which dealt with what I would consider certainly severe injuries.
I saw the pictures, they were awful.
Yeah, so obviously, I'm recommending a hearing in this case, and set it up for March 14th. The libraries had sent a letter to the board asking that in the future, all their books and associated materials that are withdrawn from their collection be donated to the friends of the library for their sales that they have. It's all legit, I mean, we can do this under the procurement law, but anything other than the board selecting approving this.
So do you need a motion?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I will, that we approve that when the library has old books and associated materials withdrawn from a collection, that they be donated to the friends of the library for sales.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right. We do have a letter from, I guess in essence, not sure if it was, the board got CC'd or was sent to Tom directly, it was certainly sent to wage and personnel specifically. She had written to the wage and personnel board with her concerns about the current procedures, not the new classification study, but what we've got in the bylaw right now regarding the classification employees. She wrote that requests should be on those rare occasions when job responsibilities have significantly changed to justify a higher grade. I guess she saw the number of requests that came in this year as abnormal and not justified. She feels a guideline should be incorporated to the bylaws to what their requirements are for each grade, and she feels that no one's being held accountable for the system, how it's working. However, she didn't ask any specific action be taken, so it's a letter that, you know, obviously she has her grievances, but.
I also found it interesting that it came after we already decided to have classifications reviewed and done professionally, so.
Recycling state grant, this is, this is a little bit different in that normally the grant contracts with the recycling center with the state are on a per-grant basis. In this case, it's a long-term agreement, in essence, so to allow for the funding through the sustainable, sustainable materials recovery program all the way to, I believe, 2020. You remember seeing that in there? It's not, so it's not for a particular amount or a particular grant, 2022, but in this, it's still, just as with the regular state contracts, that the chair would sign on behalf of the town.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Speaking of the classification compensation study, we had two orientation sessions for employees back earlier this month. Everyone's completing job description surveys, which need to be in by Friday, and other communities have been contacted about wage levels. Don Jacobs is going to be coming in to meet with wage and personnel to do an overview, just, you know, here's what, where we are, here's what we've been doing, here's what's coming up. There are no findings or anything to review, but this gives the wage and personnel a better idea of what it's all about and what we're expecting to have at the end. I'm going to ask that the board selectmen open the special town meeting warrant for May 8th. Traditionally, we open it up just after we close.
Yes.
But because tomorrow is the closing date for the annual, I wanted to just get ahead of the curve and open the special town meeting. The board would have to grant a, pick a particular date, which suggests is March 21st, three weeks from now.
Yeah.
That would be in between the two meetings, but they're also going to allow the board a chance to review the articles from the special town meeting at their meeting on March 28th.
I'll make a motion that we open the special town meeting warrant for May 8th, and that we intend to close it on March 21st.
I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye. Then we have one bond release.
Pam, these assignments, those.
So you have a bond release?
Yeah, yes. We've had that for a couple of years.
Pam, you have anything further for public consumption before we go into executive session?
Here's a bond.
We have to do a bond release. The highway department's been holding this $5,000 for the last 18 months.
Was that one down on Wall Street? They did a trench permit, and they didn't, and they opened up the road, which they didn't even give a permit for last, and they kind of made a mess of the road, so. Bought one of $5,000 to a bond, and it still wasn't done last year, so we're going to hold it again for a year, he's been down, he's, so it's fine.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we release the bond to Blue Diamond Equipment Company for $5,000 for the project that was completed on, to, to Walmart Street.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is there, I noticed in the paper that we, Brock had been served with a document from DEP?
Yeah, I talked about that a couple of weeks ago, the consent agreement.
It was in the newspaper, that's weird.
Yeah, it was part of the board's agenda a couple of weeks ago.
You did a nice job on the article.
Thank you.
I can read it.
Yeah, it was easy for people who aren't aware of the issue.
I meant that in a positive way, you know, because a lot of times, people get too technical, and it was.
Oh, absolutely, that's like, with my calm degree, that's one of the first things they taught us.
Yes.
Simple words, big ideas, not, not the, not the other way around.
I always like to say, yes, keep it simple, stupid.